The design of the project, the bid packet, and then inspection upon the project.
Leanne, what was that number again for the last one? Can you say, I'm sorry.
Listen, don't test me tonight because we're great, Ed. Okay, 2022-1 Butler Fairland. You want the second number for the supplemental agreement? The amount of it was 62-1. We've already paid 61, 780, so there's a 320 balance. I'm going to give you a printout, please, that has all these on it.
Okay.
That will give you a balance on every one.
How many, how many community crossings are we expecting to have in 2024?
If we are just now doing the notice to proceed on 2023-1. It has a completion date of July of 2024.
Yeah, July or August Monday. This time next year.
Yeah. And so that would make us eligible to apply for an additional CCMG next year once we complete one of the two projects that we have. You can have one open CCMG and still apply. So the Adam Street, which is 2022-1, is due to be completed.
Substantial completion September.
In September, but it's, chances are, are good that it won't be completed by that date. So we're hoping to get it closed out by end of year, but if not, it will be into the construction season next year. So, you know, this is totally dependent on whether we're eligible to apply for CCMG next year based on whether we actually get a project closed out between now and then. We will have costs, expenditures for these two projects potentially carrying over into next year, so we'll need to make sure that we carry funds over to, for those contracts. But the numbers that are here would be if we're able to do another community crossings project next year. Correct? And since you and I went over these numbers, Aaron, I bumped up the, that, well, actually, that's in, in the general number, but the flood control number that you and I had talked about. We bumped that up to 100,000 because we just got an invoice from VS Engineering on the work that they've done on the contract to date for the muddy certification. And there is still more pulling on that contract. That's kind of what we did this afternoon.
I was a little more dramatic.
Well, I was, went home, trying to remind myself I'm in meetings.
Yes, yes.
I guess I wasn't, I was unaware of that, so all that was done prior to me taking the lead.
The actual contract goes back to Randy Strass.
Well, the original contract goes back to Randy in 2010, but we did a, basically a supplement in 2020, like in August or September of 2020, when we kind of got the project rolling again. We haven't had time since that came in to research exactly what has been paid against that original contract, so some of that is still to come, but they're showing a balance on the contract amount. So to protect ourselves, we have budgeted in flood control for that. And of course, this year, we know that your flood control budget got used for repairs to the, to the floodgate and to the lift pump station, correct?
It did, and I've got more repairs underway than I possibly need.
Yeah. So that's just FYI on, that, that line item is actually on the first page, number 1391, but Aaron typically manages that as well. So back to the streets budget.
It's probably easier to go down from the top than there is to the way.
Pardon me?
Probably easier just to go down from the top, I guess.
Yep, go ahead.
On the changes, it looks like I come down to park cemetery maintenance. 243 is the last numbers. That increased for headstone maintenance. I don't remember where that was before. That was coming out in general or something, wasn't it there?
That's why I had it increased.
We already touched base on the engineering line item. Next note that you'll see there is for park infrastructure. It says decrease in need for alone. So biggest need for the street department is going to be the building. There's some money put in here for a possible another truck, but first and foremost, my needs for the building, so I don't have needs. Contractor is technically scheduled to start in September. There's going to be soft costs involved that isn't rolled into that contract. There could be possible change work. Hope not, but it could be change work. We're looking into getting gas out there. Niscow will typically only run so far, and then you might have to pick up the difference. There's possible servers or getting somebody in there. Everything will be provisioned to have conduit run, but we'll still need to get somebody in there to run cabling and make those connections and make sure that we're running secure. I don't think it'll have to be more than yours ladder just what's here at the city building, but in the same token, there's going to be need for that sort of stuff. So depending on where the budget falls, there's a note in here for park infrastructure that can be used for a possible line item, maybe divert some funds over to, to a fund for the new upcoming building, as well as the vehicle. I can get by without a vehicle. I've got a 2008 Ford that, utility truck, typical fashion. I think it's only got 70,000 miles on it, the body and the seat and the floor and everything else is just starting to slide away. But with that being said.
Pretty invested.
It's starting, and then I've got a GMC that's about the same way, but they're mechanically sound. So first and foremost, I would rather make sure that I have funds to complete the building. It's going to start next month. We're committed. I can go into it partially, so I would like to have a line item specifically, depending where things fall that we can go to, and if we need something on that building. So. Other than those few things, everything else has stayed flat. Anybody got questions? You said trucks, like, this is trucks, like, just allowing, you know? Yeah, well, the $60,000 in there, and I didn't do much of diligence because I'd be too busy down there on Adam Street to actually get a cost. As you know, I struggled for the last two years even getting pickup truck. I couldn't get localation, couldn't get one out to Bloomington Ford, and I got on that state bed and things that would get me a couple. I've got about $6,000 in that truck alone, just for one truck. So I haven't done much diligence and figured out which one I would want, whether it's the flatbed or the utility truck. So I don't know what your costs are at this point. Like I said, my first and foremost is the building, making sure I've got funds there.
So is that with the truck lift, this door, from the building?
Truck lift is for the building. Yeah, we have one cur, we have one currently, but there's two shots for the central office. So we use the one that's already down there is going to be reversed, and the water department will pay to remove that and get that replaced, and I will buy a new one from our side. My hopes and intent is that if things go off my current budget, I will encumber, if not all, the vast majority of those funds. But if not, and I have a bad year, and I could get repairs in the last five or six months, that's what I'll do. And really, I can cut some of that cost out, which I think actually we did that. I think that whole cost didn't cover the whole lift. I think the whole lift is 23,000. If I pull the jacks out, I can save about $8,000, and we'll just have to use four decks, and then I can buy a lift or a jack one a year for the next couple of years if I have to. But the goal is to at least get the lift installed so that we can do our old changes and do our light maintenance.
What's the money do we have on the curb and sidewalk line item?
There's a certain amount tag. We can remove it over to that line item because there's no road, it's impossible for them to get to. So we have to, there is a left for another uses.
Do you think next year you'll be able to get a curb and sidewalks or?
I'll reiterate what I pre-iterated, what I said the first time, what the council wished for that time. I feel that taking those funds is better suited to use as a match for CCMG. It's too difficult.
Because you're doing curbs and sidewalks.
Yes, because we're doing curbs and sidewalk. It's too difficult to get a contractor to come in and do spot repairs like we were doing. Half the reason I got away from it, or didn't necessarily get away from it, is one, my manpower and experience, our workload, and try and get a contractor to come in and do that little bit of amount of work was getting impossible. So I personally feel, and this is my own, my own personal opinion, that it's better suited to use those funds, if council wishes to continue to do that, but use those funds for a match for CCMG, and let's do larger projects like you're saying, let's do, we did Main Street, Sham and Millard Line, we did Wilson Street, Monroe Street, Front Street. You're getting more bang for your buck. You're taking that, that initial investment, and you're leveraging that money, and you're getting in out to pay three quarters of the job. So my personal opinion is, is yes, if you want to set money aside, let's set money aside every year for a match for CCMG, and we can look at the Pazer, and we can pull that out, which will give inventory and everything, and we can make a decision on what street we want to do next.
That's what I was looking at on the line item itself, is do we really need 100,000 in that, or is it, would it be better suited to put that money somewhere else in your budget to match?
So originally, when CCMG first started coming along, it's been a whirlwind. We put money in there in case if we had overages or stuff like that, or I had money in my budget to cover some of that. And there was times where we used some of my local funds as part of the match. So that's, that's a tough question.
We've used storm sewers, for example, for work that was ineligible currently for the federal dollars through CCMG, so the project at Calle Hill.
We used it on there, I think it's, yeah, I used it all on that.
You used that, that full budget here or those stuff over there, so those are ineligible expenses. So as Aaron was alluding, when we plan projects for CCMG, we look at the Pazer, which has both the quote level of the streets, how good is the ranking for those, plus the adjacent sidewalks on either side, and the handicap ramps. And that all factors into selecting projects. So Adam Street, heavy traffic area, no sidewalks that go through from, from Market to Wilson, so that was kind of a no-brainer. Indiana and Union adjacent to it have sections of sidewalk that are non-existent and are in very bad shape. Handicap ramps that are not in good shape are missing.
And utilities might play a factor, maybe.
Yeah.
Give you a prime example, Craig had another water leak up on South Hamilton. I can remember setting repairs in there, so it's probably about time that line gets replaced, or the curbs are shot, it was a lack of drainage, so that might be a small street that you say, okay, we gotta get water replaced, let's get that one there, put a package together, we put a box of curbs, water line, and that's our package, and then...
And if it involves drinking water, we could consider, you know, going back out for an OAKR ramp before the new water replacement in the water mon income area. You can apply for those funds, so that wouldn't get you money for the streets, but it would, you know, at least get us partway there because some of the work that's going by water, you know.
I have to agree with your line of thinking.
Yeah.
Yep.
So should we do some kind of resolution or something to remove that?
Well, I don't think there's a problem in leaving it in that line item. I mean, you're just saying that we'll use that for community crossings match, and then when you actually do a resolution that says that we're applying for community crossings project for 2024-2, say, and our commitment of funds will come from curbs and sidewalk, blah, 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 whatever. And up to this point, too, we've had highway relinquishment fund that was used for match, and that is just about, well, that is depleted now.
That's depleted now.
So, you know, so now it's coming from MBH, some from LRS, and wherever else we can grab, you know, enough funds for the match for these projects.
If we can't come up with a whole thing, maybe we play so much of years to do CCMG. We've got a lot of work in the last five years with CCMG, so it's nice that we, it'd be nice if we could afford to continue to do that because if we've got the streets done, that, I would not be able to do that much as long as Endo is willing to, I'm sure if you can continue to give 75%, I think it's a, it's a good program to do. Makes sense the budget for.
Yeah, and that's been great, too, for the, I mean, obviously for the reconstruction projects that have been done and restoration projects, but, you know, you're able to do microseal and crack seal.
Yes.
Out of that CCMG project funding as well, so that helps to prolong the roads that we do have, so.
And that's what I'd use my budget for this year, because we didn't, you know, we were on the books for two, so I'd use my local funds to make sure I did maintenance because I don't want to fall behind with my crack seal. Last time they gave us the large portion of the work, they gave us the big one, gave us over $1 million or the one, the $1 million grant, but I had no money for maintenance, so then I used my local money to make sure somebody would fall behind, and that's maintenance is part of the big picture, making sure the crack seal and microseal. We have those things at the same time.
Do you have any plans for Robinson Street? I saw that it's been a devin.
I made it a devin. I don't have any plans currently, so dictating to do something.
We don't have a, we do not yet have a budget line item, or I should say an estimate of what that would cost to widen the street, and we do need to get that accomplished. It is not included in any of the numbers that, that Aaron has presented, so, you know, we would have to determine a rough estimate of what that would cost and where we would want to budget that line item.
Is that helping through with any sort of construction on that road?
It's still waiting on the BZA to meet, that got pushed to the next meeting, so they meet on the 21st. And some of what was, I mean, we do know what the, which of the right of way is there. It's a 40-foot right of way, so that would dictate anywhere from an 18 to 20-foot road. So, you know, that gives you an idea of how much widening would occur there.
Plus some survey work?
Yeah, the survey.
The actual utilization. The hydrants pulled down there.
Yep.
Those are personal expenses.
You know, I think it's like the top priority, and that it has something that will probably address probably after, probably during the next construction season, but I'll see if things move forward too quick here, over halfway over.
Kind of depend too on, I think the BZA's recommendation, well, their decision, it's really at the final, final voice side, so.
I understand, I'm fully staffed.
Doesn't happen very often, do you?
Nope.
I go on spurts.
Employees want anything, get recommendations from your employees at all?
Not often, but they're all here, they show up every day, and full staff, so it's...
So any recommended changes? Counsel? Again?
Yeah.
Any more questions for Aaron?
Is there anything that you absolutely need or want?
Like I said, the biggest thing is, is the building, so depending on where the budget lies, yes, I can do, I can deal with not getting a truck in.
Okay.
My biggest, biggest concern is make sure I have funds for the building, the unforeseen's and what's not accounted for currently in the contract that we're dealing with, which I wish I had a good answer for you what the dollar amount is, but I truly don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
You guys have a good evening.
Don't forget to stick around.
I have a prior engagement. Guys, have a good evening.
You too.
Chief Ploner? I think he's got the seat hot for you, so.
Any questions from the outset or discussion, or just start going through line by line? Start going here. All right. As the mayor said, assuming a 4% increase, moving to patrolman first class, we're assuming six officers, and that is Sergeant Decker and I are working on a lateral policy, hoping to have that in place for your review at the next meeting and open up a lateral process, hopefully get a candidate that already has a captain under their belt. Patrolman, that is, is down in that we're assuming that probationary would move to that patrolman class later in the year in September, so that's assuming if we get, we have a conditional offer out right now, we're on the purse, supposed to have an answer by tomorrow, hoping to get that gentleman in by September. Probationary, same thing, assuming that one probationary officer, same person we're talking about, in place up to September. Clothing, I guess just to put a note on that, currently officers request clothing equipment or clothing, and there's not really a determination process, and then I would order it, do an APB currently, and what's kind of more customary... What's kind of more customary, and I know that the Carroll County Sheriff's Department's looking to go to this as well, is just paying out that clothing allowance possibly quarterly to officers. So I guess just to kind of put a bug in your ear now, and that'll take some discussion with Leanne as well, but my hope would be to divvy out that clothing allowance as part of an employment package, basically. So that that would be a more predictable number and that there's not, not being used the way you already allocate per officer and how much money they get per officer.
That's what we're supposed to do.
But like you said, the process right now is it goes through me. I approve or deny, I don't really have a criteria that I'm supposed to abide by that I'm aware of to approve or deny that. I see more paying it out on, because I thought we budgeted a thousand dollars per officer for clothing a year.
We budgeted that, but it's not something that's given to be, you know, paid out to the officers at present time. It's a budget item and if one officer gets, you know, four hundred and sixteen dollars worth of, of materials in a year, another is, as I say, an officer has to get fully outfitted, but it might be more than a thousand by the time it's all said and done. So it's not been a line item that has been distributed to, to the officers. That would require a change in policy and something that could be discussed.
So just to, just to throw that out there and plant that seat now. The next item with some changes, part-time. We really value and rely on our part-time officers, especially since we're not fully staffed at the moment. They've covered many shifts for us. If we're in a bind, they're, they're stepping up and working shifts, especially with old settlers over the weekend. On Thursday, we were able to have three Delphi officers out. I got a ton of really good feedback on that and from the night shift officer that would normally be by himself running calls plus old settlers. So to have three, three officers out, that was, that was really nice. Moving on to certifications, I sent an email out and I'm still receiving responses from our officers on what certifications they possess, what specialties that we would be paying out. So I'll have more finite numbers on that next time. We just put that small increase there as soon as we have more officers come in and, and start getting more specialties and money on them. The equipment and supplies, so having two of them.
Can I go back to the?
Sure.
One of the things that the chief and I discussed was that we do have a number of officers who have certifications that we're not using. So right now, we're paying for a certification, but if an officer is presented with a training opportunity and they choose not to, I mean, where they could go out and train and use their certification and they say that they would not want to do that, then we're paying them for a certification that we've won, made training budget to allow them to get. And then they're not utilizing it.